All right, good evening. This is October 21st, 2024, 6:30 PM. I'm calling the Select Board meeting to order.
It's 22nd.
Did I say 21st, 22nd? Sorry, October 22nd, 2024. What a day, right? Okay, we've got a pretty short meeting. A couple of things have dropped off, so let's get going. But we've got an interesting meeting. Okay, start off with any public comment? Vanessa? Nothing? Okay, all right. The tax classification here is not supposed to start till 6:45. It's posted, so we can't start that till 6:45. The next item would have been to speak with Travis, but his group is not going to be here till 7:30 or so. So we're going to go on to reports. All right?
Sure.
What else can we do? Okay, a couple of good things. So on that miserable Heritage Day we had, otherwise it was good. We were able to finally dedicate one of the three benches in the new park to Kim Tollender, who had died unexpectedly last year, member of the school committee, way too young to die for sure. And it turned out great. We had a really good crowd there. Their parents came from Indiana. Roger Challen did the honor of talking and did a great job. Lots of her friends were there. And I think that both her husband and son probably were pretty happy with the way it turned out. So we can check that one off and feel pretty good about what we did. Right, Marguerite? All righty. Heritage Day. So we know what the weather was like, Travis. Travis did a fantastic job, which we're going to hear more about in a few minutes. So it was still pretty well attended. I was amazed at how many booths we have these days. There was a lot to do at Heritage Day, interesting stuff, too. So I hope that people felt pretty good about the way it turned out, given the weather. But it would, I don't know, probably half the crowd that it usually is, something like that, I would say. To East Main Street. As everybody probably remembers, one of our goals this year is to try to get something done with the, or encourage the owner of the lot at Newton and Main Street to try to do something with that lot. A few years ago, he did try to do something and didn't succeed. The planning board did not vote for the project. So it's just set there, and it's been a repository of dirt since then. So it's a dirt collector. So Peter Beemis does have a project that is, that he's planning now. He went in front of the planning board last night. I didn't see the meetings. I'm not quite sure what he said.
He got a very warm reception. They were very enthusiastic about it. They had some questions and concerns, but basically very supportive, delighted that something was actually going to happen there.
Good, good. So I talked to him, and he's pretty optimistic about it, too. He seems to want to get it done. So let's continue to support the project any way we can and hope that it gets done. That would be a big win for us, I think, to have something there that takes advantage of the new zoning and is something that we would like to see in downtown Southborough. Andrew, I think you're going to do Tricentennial?
So I just wanted to report on the fact that Tricentennial Committee The Tricentennial Committee had a booth at Heritage Day, as many of you know. And one of the purposes of that was to sell commemorative bricks, which are going to be put in some of the walkways in Heritage Park, leading out from the circular gathering area. It was very successful. And I want to continue to people who are thinking about buying a brick to do so. And there's information about it online at the Tricentennial Committee's website.
And they cost $300 because it's the 300th anniversary.
Yes.
All right, Mark?
So a couple of items to start off with. First of all, just letting the board know, I believe the board notices gone out, the resignation of Shannon Kinnaman from Youth and Family Services. She'd been program coordinator for the department for the last eight years. And her last day was last Wednesday. I had the opportunity to go over to Youth and Family. They had a very nice reception for her and wished her well on her next endeavors. So she will be missed. I know that Sarah is working with Vanessa to get that position advertised. Also, just yesterday, received notice from Dean Sibelli. He's retiring from the town, from the Department of Public Works, effective November 4th, 2024. He has been with us for 36 years, since November 2nd of 1988. He is currently the Highway Foreman. I know that, you know, Bill's only been here for a short time, but he's really valued what Dean has been able to bring to the table and help him with and help get him comfortable with things. So we are going to miss him. And just wanted to acknowledge what he's done for the town and thank him for his, for his many years of service. In your packet is some notices. If you're familiar with our Southborough Power Choice Renewal or Power Choice Program, this is our electric aggregation program that we make available to residents. So they have a choice rather than just getting their power from N-Star. The program has been fairly successful. The press release that is going to be going out about this, I think over the past several years, we've saved residents about $9 million in total from what they would have paid through the pricing for National Grid. A lot of that was through some of the rate spikes during the pandemic. So I think that, you know, that that has really, has helped. In your packet, there are two mailers that will be going out. We currently have two programs. We have the basic program, and then we have the program for people who want all green electricity. So it's a little bit more. We're actually adding in a third option, which is kind of a blend between the two. So if you want to be green a little bit, but you don't want to pay as much of the higher price, there is a program now that you can have 50% of your energy provided from green sources. And so the information in the packet shows the two messages that will be going out to all residents, all subscribers as well. So if you're in the basic program, you know, you will get the one that says you're enrolled in the Power Choice standard option. If you're in the green program, you'll be getting the one that says you're currently enrolled in the Power Choice green option. It's really a, you know, a good program. I like the mailer because it explains people's options. You know, if you don't, you don't need to take any action if you want to continue with the program that you're in. If you do want to change to a different program, you have to do so before your next billing date in December. And it says that right on your bill as to when your next bill date, as when your next read date is. And so that information will all be going up on the website. Mailers will be going out. We'll have information at the Town House. We'll be pushing that out through social media. So I just wanted the board to have a chance to see what was going out before it did.
And you can make your choice right now? Is it ready to make?
I think November 1st
Okay.
is when they're going to be, is when they're going to be sending out that information. So I think they'll be looking, if you want to make the changes effective of November 1st forward, you can do that.
Okay, so that's good.
Really quick, CSX was doing improvements on Central Street at their railroad crossing. The work was done October 15th and 16th. That has all been completed. Talked to Bill Kundif. He's very happy with the improvements, that everything came out very nicely. So that's one CSX crossing down, and we still have the one down, down on Main Street that we need to, you know, we need to get resolved.
The suspension of my car thanks you.
Yes, it is much better, much improved.
Well, it couldn't have gotten much worse, so. And finally, on a, on a, two good notes. One, the ALS weekend at the Southborough Golf Club went well, even though it was the first one that we've had that we've really had to work through some rain. 292 rounds of golf were played. There was an additional $280 in donations outside of the greens fees that were received over the three days. And so the management company mailed a check in the amount of $3,200 out to ALS One in the memories of Brian Shiffrin and John Wilson. So I do want to thank the management company, everybody who golfed for the weekend, Brian Shea for helping to shepherd things. He's continued to do that since he's, when he was on the board and left the board. So I appreciate him doing that and everyone who donated. And the only other thing I want to offer, there was an email that had gone out. I believe I forwarded it to everyone from Melissa Danza, just a quick update on the Breakneck Hill work and the remediation up there. I'm not going to go through it. It was a very nice job. She's been doing a great job shepherding this. She did say that the majority of the waste is going to be going to the main facility, which is the cheaper of the two options. So hopefully, we're going to end up turning back some of the bonding authorization this time. Last time it didn't work out, so hopefully this time we'll turn back some bonding authorization at, yeah, maybe even the Springtown meeting. So that's all I have.
So Paul, we recognize the retirement of your brother before you walked in, so just so you know.
Cousin, cousin.
Oh, I thought he was your brother.
No, he's my cousin.
Cindy is your sister?
Yep.
Okay, so, all right, I thought Dean was your brother. Sorry, well, your cousin.
Yeah.
Okay, still family. Okay. Can we just go back to the electricity program real quick and make sure? A couple things. So to me, the key is the circles at the bottom, as far as showing me what your choices are. And even if you pick the most green one, you're still are slightly less than the grid rate, which is not green, right? So you're still below grid, and you're green. So I think this is great. They've added the third choice to get as many people enrolled in this as possible. Do we know how many people in town percentage wise are in this?
I have those numbers, but not with me.
It's large, right?
It is.
All right, consent agenda. We've got A, B, C, and D. Anybody want to hold minutes?
Yep.
Okay, I want to hold B and C. Anybody want to hold the executive session meeting minutes?
Nope.
Don't we need to?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Okay, so Andrew, you making a motion to approve D?
I approve. I move that we approve the executive session meeting minutes for October 8th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Sam, minutes?
On the 8th. Small one, line 111, Friday instead of Fridays. Line 162 should specify one in each area. And in lines 200 through 204, talking about the reporting stuff. I think it's not aimed quite correctly there. I think it's not really so much bylaw compliance. I thought the focus was reporting for DPW issues and bylaw compliance issues. And then use the, instead of bylaw website updates, I'd say
Okay, so what do you want her to say exactly in that sentence?
Instead of bylaw compliance, I'd say reporting for DPW issues and bylaw compliance issues.
Reporting for DPW issues and
And bylaw compliance issues, because it includes potholes and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
And then in line 204, instead of saying bylaw website updates, I'd say use the previously proposed C Click Fix software. Because I think that was the
Okay, say that again, because she's got to hear you say this. Say that again, what you want to hear.
Line 204.
Okay.
Instead of bylaw website updates, I would say use the previously proposed C Click Fix software.
Okay, DPW is sort of kind of has decided against using the
Previously proposed C Click Fix software.
Okay.
I think that's correct. Yeah, okay. And then in line 237 about the executive session, I thought we omitted reason number two there for executive session. It was just number one.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it was on the agenda, but I don't think it was read correct.
Yeah, she, she
Yep.
Francis, okay, so, so Richard just take out number two, okay?
That's it for me.
Anybody else submit? Andrew?
I had a minor one on line 124. The spelling of Catherine should be with an R-Y-N. It's Catherine McKee's name.
Okay. All right, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N.
That's the correct spelling, right?
Yes.
Which should be spelled, okay.
Right.
I agree with that. Okay, anybody else on minutes? Okay, Andrew, you making a motion?
I move that the board approve the open session meeting minutes for October 8th, 2024 as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we're going to come back to B and C, but it is 6:45, and that is the time that the tax classification hearing was posted. And they're all here, right? Okay, so you want to read the? Do you have it?
I don't think I do.
Paul, do you have the actual hearing notice? You got it, Lori?
Vanessa still want me to share this?
No, but she's talking about this is a sheet they read before. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
I'm looking for the actual hearing notice.
Just the one that was published.
Yeah, the Select Board usually publishes a notice.
I understand, so we're trying to find it.
I don't have it.
It's not in the pack.
We'll find it. So is it on the town website, surely, right?
Yeah, no, I'm also.
You got it?
Mark, is it the legal notice we're looking for?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Look at that. Perfect, thank you. Just wanted to make me sweat. Southborough Select Board should hold a public hearing with the Board of Assessors Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, at 6:45 PM to determine the certified valuation of each class of property, the minimum residential factor, and the allocation of the tax burden among the four classes of real property, residential, open space, commercial, and industrial, and personal property. Public hearing will be held in the McCall of Hearing Room at the Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough. The meeting may also be viewed by the public through a link located at ma-southborough.civicplus.com/674/virtualmeetings. All interested parties are encouraged to view and or participate. Additionally interested citizens may present written views prior to the public hearing to Southborough Select Board and Board of Assessors.
Thank you, Mr. Purple. So welcome, everybody. Paul, you want to introduce everybody before you get started?
I certainly will. There you go.
Yep, go. It's yours.
All right, so good evening. And now we, obviously, as Kathy said, we want to welcome the public to our annual classification hearing. Joining me tonight is the Board of Assessors, Jeffrey Klein, Heath Wittes, Tammy Rice, and of course, the backbone of our department, Deputy Assessor Lori Esposito. So last year, we gave you a longer presentation. Obviously, everybody's seen it. And we did that because obviously there was two new select board members. This year, we hacked the heck out of it so we could basically make this go a little quicker. You've all seen the, a lot of the information. We don't need to rehash it. And really, we're going to just delve into more of the numbers. So let's get started. So again, what is tax classification? Allows communities to have different tax rates for certain classes of property. You get the residential, the commercial, industrial, and personal property, which will be known as CIP in this presentation. State statute provides a maximum allowable portion of the tax levy up to 150% to be borne by the CIP classes. Provides a minimum allowable portion to be borne by the residential class. Let's also keep in, just a reminder, classification does not raise additional dollars from the property tax, but serves to distribute how much the levy will be raised from each class. Allows the Select Board to make the decision whether to shift the burden from one class to property to another. So again, one class to another, unlike the other two we'll look at today, where it's, where you're shifting within the class. And again, town of Southborough, as you all well know, has never had a split tax rate. Okay, fiscal year '25 assessments are based on analysis of calendar year 2023 sales. In market conditions, the assessments reflect the value of properties as of January 1st, 2024. Calendar year '24 sales and market conditions will be reflected in the '26 assessments, as there is a one-year time lag in the assessment process. Okay, let's get to some numbers here. So what is happening to the assessments? Town's total taxable valuation increased by $221 million to a new high of $3.788 billion in FY '25. This is an increase of 6.21%. Overall, we're going to look at the classes. And again, this is, this also includes new growth value that's also in there. So our residential went up 6.75. Commercial, 1.16. Industrial class increased 6.29. That still remains pretty solid. And the personal property class increased 3.72%. Residential class in '24 was 11.19. So the market was still increasing in '23, but not as rapidly. Okay, so FY '25 new growth. So the overall value that we captured was $43.99 million. That equates to $611,898 tax dollars. Okay, percent change, down 15.9% from the prior year. This year's new growth has decreased by approximately $108,000 over the prior year and significantly, significantly lower than the 10-year average of $728,839. Again, we're finishing up some projects. Really, I mean, you all have heard, we've got some 40B projects out there. But again, I think we're going to have a little lull, and I think it'll be a little light this upcoming year, because obviously the 40Bs take some time to work their way through the process. Okay, the average single-family assessed value increased $64,100 to $957,500. This is a 7.2% increase. And again, looking to the prior slide, last year was up 11.19%. So again, going up, but not quite as sharply. The average commercial, industrial, mixed-use assessed value. Usually, we show you the median, but I just threw this in. Again, it went up $86,000 to $3,445,500, a 2.6% increase, same as the prior year.
The next one we've got says single rate impact at the top.
Yeah, hold on a second. So again, the average, the average single-family tax bill last year was $12,427. It's up 6.4% at $13,223. Again, that excludes the Community Preservation Act. Bear with me a sec. Okay, the average commercial, industrial, mixed-use tax bill would increase from $46,731 to $47,582, or a 1.82% increase. And the increase is good news, considering last year's average went down by 3.27. And again, excludes the Commercial Preservation Act surcharge. This is one I kind of want you to pay attention to, the pie chart in the left-hand corner. Commercial, industrial, personal property classes combined represents 15.89% of the town's total value, which you can see is trending downward, okay? Lori added a couple on the right for you to take a look at. You can kind of see where we've been and how it's shrinking over the past four years. Historically, CIP typically falls between 17 and 20%. It's always been the way since I've been here. It is now falling below this range. Also, keep in mind, the majority of the real estate new growth is on the residential side. So that, that's also going to sway this a little bit. Again, it's all dictated by the market and just the residential values going up so much over the past three or four years. Okay, tax rate shift impacting using the average value. Okay, if we look at a 5% tax shift scenario, residential rate would decrease to $1368, while the CIP would increase to $1450. This produces only less than 1% of, or a $124 savings to residential property, while increasing CIP property by 5% of $2,378. Again, it's a little skewed, because when you're using the averages, the average for the commercial and industrial is so much larger. Makes a little, it's a little more representative when you look at the medians.
Paul?
Yep.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So you're talking about a 5% split tax rate. What is that 5% referring to there?
The average tax bill. So what we're doing, the 5% split, when you're talking about a 5% split, it's a split in the levy, shifting 5% of the levy.
And you could do as much as 50%, is that right?
150.
Eventually.
So a 5% shift is considered 105.
And that's the limit for one year? Any one year, can you go up 10%?
Go up any percent you want.
Up to 50%.
In one year? I thought there was a limit in terms of how much you could shift in one year.
You have to calculate a residential minimal factor that can dictate how high you can go. It's not necessarily all the way up to 1.50. You still have to meet the residential minimum factor.
So it's 5% compared to what the levy is with the split rate?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
5% compared to what the levy is with the
Okay, Andrew, levy won't change. Let's say it's $60 million. That levy does not change. That's what we're going to collect. It's basically how you're splitting it between the classes, okay? If you want to shift a little bit more burden onto the commercial and industrial.
Take an additional 5%.
Yeah, so in this scenario, and I just picked 5%.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, but you could go 50% as long as we have, still meet the test for the minimum piece of residential that's part of that. But this shows a 5%, what a huge impact to the commercial side it would have, even doing that a little bit and such a puny reduction in residential taxes.
Yeah, again, the very bottom of the slide is the key takeaway is for every $1 you save on the residential, it's 4.67 on a, on a commercial, industrial, the average. I think that's, that's kind of what you really want to take away from it.
But there's more to that story, so let's keep going.
Okay, next slide is, everybody likes to see what's going on with rates around us. You know, comparing rates doesn't really tell the, tell a whole heck of a lot, because it's, again, multiplied by assessments. Towns with high assessments typically have lower tax rates. Again, it's just a mathematical equation, total value of the town divided into the levy. So there's more to play. A lot of people feel as though, oh, you compare this, it, you know, if you have a lower tax rate, you know, you're paying less in taxes, not necessarily. Okay, and again, you see $1381 on the left there.
And there's six split tax rates to the right?
Yeah, you got to be careful on
Hopington doesn't do it. I mean, Hopington's got the same rate, even though they call it split.
Yeah, that's because Hopington does not have a split rate. They have adopted a means-tested senior exemption. And again, that causes a, which causes the residential tax rate to be slightly higher than the CIA, CIP rate. Kind of a strange thing. Again, it's just shifting burden, burden within a class. That's all that's doing.
Okay, so there's really five that are split?
Yep. What are we going next? Okay, so the Board of Assessors unanimously recommends continuing with a single tax rate for fiscal year 2025. I didn't print out the numerous slides we have for the reasons why. You've seen it in the past. They really haven't changed. So let's jump into, so we get the other tax shift options. And remember, these are shifts within the class, not shifting from one class to the other. So let's just run through it real quick. The residential exemption shifts tax burden within the residential class from lower assessed properties to seasonal rental and higher assessed properties. Again, typically, this exemption is adopted in areas with low rates of owner occupancy. Examples would be communities with lots of rental properties, Boston and Cambridge would be examples, or seasonal properties such as Barnstable and Nantucket. This is becoming more popular down the Cape. You know, 18 out of 351 communities have adopted this, so obviously not very popular. Next up is your small commercial exemption. This exemption creates a tax burden shift that reduces the taxes paid by owners of properties occupied by small businesses and shifts them to larger commercial and industrial taxpayers. Exemption for the property owner would apply only if the tenants are a Class III business with less than, with 10 employees or less. Property is a million assessed valuation. This is typically found in communities with large commercial-industrial base. We don't have that. So again, 14 out of 351 communities have adopted this. Again, not very popular, and neither of these really apply at all to Southborough. So the Board is obviously recommending not to adopt either of those. So Madam Chair, that's all we have. So we need, on the agenda, it's selectmen discussion, board discussion, public comment, and then the selectmen need to vote on all three scenarios. So you're going to vote on the single-split tax rate, and also separately, the residential exemption, and then again, the small commercial exemption.
So that was brief and to the point.
What's that?
That was brief and to the point. So, good job.
Yeah, again, you've all seen the information. I'm not going to beat it to death. You seem to lose Andrew.
No.
No. He got it.
Good job.
You did it. You did it. So thank you guys for everything you do. So all your votes were unanimous, single tax rate, and don't adopt either one of the exemptions, correct? Okay, so let's discuss this, and then we will take three separate votes, so that we have done our job as far as this goes. And I want to start this one out, because I've been involved in town committees for a long time. I, tonight, am as, I don't know what the right word is, the adjective is, I'm not going to say depressed, I'm not depressed, but shocked. We worked so hard on the budget last year. We thought we had it below 4% year-over-year. It's 50% higher because of the shift in values again. So we've got a 6.4% year-over-year increase to the average house in Southborough for fiscal year '25, with the looming big school project coming up right after that. So, you know, we thought it was 4, it's 6.4. That's more than 50% more. So I say to this board, we have truly got to roll up our sleeves and do something about the commercial base in this town. And we know what we've got to do. We've got to do something about septic, wastewater treatment, and we've got to do something about zoning, as far as two things go. And then there's other things we can do too, but we've really got to start trying to get some things done, because I don't know how else you solve this. House prices are going to continue to go up. It's good that they're going up. We want house prices to go up. But we have got to get the commercial base to offset that, so that we don't continue to shift real estate taxes to our residents and cause people to make decisions not to move here or to leave here because of the real estate tax burden. So that's my statement. Sam, why don't you go next? Because you said you had more to say about the split tax rate, so why don't you use this opportunity to say it?
I'm surprised by this, I guess. First question is, I vaguely recall conversations that we had when we were doing the budget early this year about not expecting there was going to be a shift this year. And so we'd planned on that, and that's where we came up with 4%.
One of the things we were looking at is, actually, what I'll do is, I will, I'm going to show that slide that I showed you earlier. It could help explain it a little bit. Do we have that?
So I guess the question is, you know, why didn't we know?
So we did think that, Sam. It was that we assumed there was, you know, we had a shift for three years, COVID, '21, 1121, '22, and '23, and '24. So we've had shifts ever since COVID, right? We didn't think 1124, excuse me, 2122, '23. So we didn't think 1124 is shift, so we didn't factor it in. So today, Andrew Pfaff and I, we've had a long conversation. Paul and I've talked about what to do going forward, but we're not going to solve this one. So we do need to try to find a way to predict this in a more timely fashion, although it's not going to be easy, because of the way he comes up with commercial valuations.
Yeah, let me show you, because Kathy had called me in a panic and, you know, ready to jump off her roof. So obviously, we have to talk her off the roof. We love her. We don't want her taking a nosedive. So here's what I see, okay? And again, it's difficult. First of all, the commercial properties and personal property, the returns don't go out. Commercial properties, our biggest stuff is all valued on the income approach. So income statements, income and expense statements go out, they're not back till March. A lot of times, both them and the personal property, we don't get them back till people have finished their taxes or whatever. I have no idea where the values are really going on those, or what type of impact before town meeting. So I'm blind, pretty much blind on those. You know, it's not like we have 40 sales, and you can kind of gauge it from that. It really isn't, really, we're in the blind on that. So what happened on this situation is kind of a strange thing. So the first thing I do is, I'm looking at the 99 arms-length sales transaction. So I call through all the sales, and I come out with my 99 that we're going to use to build the valuation model off of. And I'm looking at the median sale price. If everything is median, what is the median of any stratification? So when we take an overall look at it, we're at 9.911 or 91. So what that means is, if it's 101 or 100, however you want to view it, that means the assessment and the assessed value and the sale price are the same. Okay? So the assessed values, you typically run them a little under the median in the sale price. Okay, so if you see there, I'm looking to target it at 0.95%. Okay, so you want the assessments to be about 95%. DOR's regulations, it's between 100 and 110 to be considered at market value. You would never run it over 100, because 110, 90% of your sales would be overvalued. So we wouldn't do that. So I'm looking at the 91. I want to get to 95, and I'm thinking, okay, you know, do we need any type of adjustment when we're putting together the budget? Those numbers are typically around 91, 92 when I start. The past two years, they were like '82 and '84. Never seen that. That means massive increases. Never seen that in my 25 years. So when we put, and that's when we were making adjustments to the values, taking it into consideration, you know, hey, we need to do something here to give a more accurate figure. Okay? Now, I just, so that's the overall. But here's the problem. I haven't done any of the stratifications. I haven't broken down the sales by the umpteen ways Department of Revenue wants you. So I just picked one, just to show you where we started. And I'm looking at sale price quartile, okay? So that's, so when you look at the very top one, price quartile one, okay, so that's your lowest, then it goes up, okay? So that's about your first 25, lowest, then the next 25, the price is getting higher, the next 25, and the next 25. Typically, they're all kind of in the ballpark. What you're seeing here, and what's really caused problems, is you can see that your lower-priced houses, I didn't have to adjust them that much, okay? The higher priced, I had to adjust significantly. So what that does is, it causes a shift in burden from the higher to the lower within the class. And that's just adjusting to get everybody where they should be. Okay, so what happens is, the higher prices had adjusted significantly more than the lower priced. This provides shift in burden, but it also results, it puts additional pressure on the average single-family home. It went higher, had these all been like '92, and there was only shifting it. The average single-family home, which we always use as the benchmark, the Department of Revenue uses as a benchmark, kind of inflated it more than typical. And we can't see that until we lay out the assessments and finalize them. The sales, I don't have a good idea on anything until, you know, where everything's going to fall until about June or July. So you're kind of flying blind a little bit. This scenario, it was kind of the other way around. Our upper homes had really hadn't, in my opinion, were a pretty good deal, because they were underperforming sales-wise for a while. Never could figure it out. Well, it's starting to catch up, obviously. We're seeing houses crack $2 million without much of an effort. A lot of stuff in '15, '16, '17. You know, I always looked at Shipper Farms, some of the nicest homes. You know, for a long time, we couldn't crack '13, '14. Those should have been a lot higher. Well, now the market's caught up, and you're starting to see the higher properties increase significantly. And that is part of dragging it in, dragging the average up a little bit. So again, it's difficult when we do this. There's no real way. Typically, you're going off last year's values, and, you know, when you look at that median sale of 0.91, you kind of make a judgment call. You know, we sit down with the finance team, do we want to put anything in there like we did the two prior years to account, to kind of give a better idea or a better picture? We didn't do it this year, and again, you know, kind of blindsided a little bit about the high-end stuff going up so much. Sam, your taxes are going up more.
I'm sure everybody's is, but I guess, I'm also curious, clearly, everybody is driven by the same schedule, all 351 towns.
Yes.
Are there others who've figured out better ways to do this from a budgeting standpoint in terms of having a budget that's basically in front of town meeting in March, April, May kind of timeframe? Are there other ways that we can learn from others about that help us plan better for tax rate changes?
I think one of the things in all the services is just, we have early town meetings. You know, the later the town meeting, the more information...
But even if we had a town meeting in April, early May kind of timeframe, still doesn't sound like you're going to get all the data you need.
No, you're still probably not going to reach it. You know, you may have a little more information. I've never reached out. I mean, that's something, you know, the town could, you know, the finance team could look around and see what other people...
I think that could be interesting to look at towns who presumably have some of the same pressures we do. I'm surprised that, I mean, from what you say, it seems unlikely that anybody has the magic solution out there. On the other hand, maybe people have ways of refining that adjustment process, so you can target your budgeting process in the spring more accurately there, because this is a substantial bump in terms of what I was looking for here, term. So. My other question is, I'm also interested in the fact that the average single-family tax bill is going up 6.4% or so. The average commercial tax bill is going up, was it 1.8%, which to me suggests, is there something to be done there in terms of the split tax rate to shift some of that burden of the increase from residence to commercial a little bit? And that, you know, again, I continue to be interested in split tax rate. I'm very adept at counting votes. I don't think that's going to pass here from the body language and conversations I've heard previously. So I'm not going to swim upstream on that one. On the other hand, I think that clearly, there are a lot of people who use a split tax, and I look around at some of these people, they're not getting, you know, massive defections of the business committee. I think that the fear that we're going to lose lots of businesses if we do a split tax, I think is overblown. My personal opinion, I don't have any data that proves that one way or the other. But again, I remain interested, but mostly concerned about our ability to predict in the spring how we can aim the tax increase from our budgeting process for the next fiscal year in a better way. I mean, this is sort of done now, basically, but how can we do better for FY '26? Thank you.
Can I respond to a couple of things you said, Paul?
Sure.
So the important thing to understand is that his issue, as far as what does everybody else do, someone else have a magic answer, is that to get to the commercial number, he's got to wait till the owners submit their P&Ls for the year, which sometimes waits for their accountants. You know, they're all backed up, and it may be April before they get it in. So we at least did push a town meeting back a little bit to maybe help with this a little bit, but he's got to wait till those come in. He can't control the cap rate. He's got to figure what that is at the same time. So I don't know what else he does, other than to at least maybe look at the house side and say, well, we at least know the house side's way up, which means that probably this is going to happen again, knowing that commercial values are still depressed because of COVID and not expected to jump up anytime soon. As far as the split tax rate, I think the slide where he shows, does doing 5% what a big impact it has on businesses? And I do think it would run, if not cause businesses to leave, cause businesses not to come here. And if you look at the towns that have done it, we don't look like Framingham, we don't look like Marlboro, and we don't look like Hudson. Forget Hockington, that's really not split, based on what Paul said. Sudbury surprises me a little bit. But Framingham and Marlboro have a huge commercial base. If we had, if this was 80/20 the other way, you absolutely could shift a little bit to the commercial side and not hurt them. But when it's the other way, you kill the commercial side just to get a dollar reduced from the residents. So I continue to think that it just makes no sense for Southborough to even consider a split tax rate, based on 85/15 split we have right now.
I respect your viewpoint.
I know. I know. I respect yours too, seriously. I respect yours, absolutely, absolutely.
But anyway, I mean, and again, I certainly understand the calendar constraints on the assessor in terms of getting the right data to this, and I'm not optimistic that anybody has a wonderful solution to it. On the other hand, it seems to be asking around, might generate some ideas of different ways to estimate things to give us better data when we go through our budget exercise for town meeting.
I think Brian looked back last, Mark, what do you look back, I think like 12 years or something, and, you know, there were a couple of years that, yeah, we missed by a couple of percentages, and, you know, there were a bunch, we were pretty close, so...
But we've never had a string like this because of COVID, where, you know, four years in a row that we've had this continual shift.
Yeah, again, I've been doing this for 25 years. You know, I can tell where the numbers are going to fall when I start, you know, and we've never had to really, we've never really had to, in the budget process, account for this type of shift in values. And usually, when you have something like this, maybe one, two years, but it's been going on, and it's, they're large shifts, you know? So it's new. And every community is experiencing the same type of thing. Okay, again, I think it's 68, 69% of the towns have a single rate. And kind of what Sam's alluding to is, you know, you would think, well, maybe more towns would go to a single. I think over the last two years, I think only three towns actually shifted. And the shifts were so small, it didn't do anything. It wasn't even a 5% shift, like 1, 1.5%. That's not doing any good.
I mean, if you have a $13,000 tax bill, would saving $100 make you jump up and down? Wouldn't me. I don't think you'd even notice it, right? And in the commercial side, they would notice it, because it'd be so big. So I'm just jumping around. Al, you want to chime in here?
Sure. Thank you for this careful analysis. You know, as, I've been noodling numbers over the last couple of weeks, and, you know, as we move from 80 to 85% residential, what that means is that roughly $2 million, a little over $2 million of tax burden shifted from the commercial and industrial, the CIP side, to the residential side, which is about 3% of our budget. It's not trivial. And if we wanted to get back to where we were at, say, 80/20, it's going to require something on the order of $165 million worth of commercial development. And that's a pretty big number, but that's kind of the number you need to get back to 80/20. It's a big number until you start looking around a little bit. And so I did look around a little bit, and, you know, so I looked at the Home Depot that I go to, which is the one in Marlboro. That's assessed at $10 million. The Target, which is right next door to it, is assessed at $8 million. The Whole Foods Plaza in Shrewsbury is assessed at over $20 million. And, you know, given that I don't think we're going to be seeing a lot of office parks being built in the foreseeable future, that game, I think, is over. I think we need to really seriously reconsider what it is we're looking at and going after. We need to deal with our zoning, particularly along Route 9. Let's face it, in order to get $150 million worth of development, it's got to come on Route 9. It's not going to happen down at the corner of Newton and 30, much as I'd like to see something there. And we need to deal with sewers, and quite honestly, we need to deal with kind of the attitude of the town relative to the folks who we need to spend $150 million to put up new facilities. And so the first thing I think that this board should do is place on its agenda in the very near future to essentially set up a Sewers Working Group. Because we need to, you know, we keep talking about, you know, we need wastewater management, and we've now got to actually start the ball rolling. It's a 10-year process, I know that, but we've got to start doing that. We have to take a comprehensive review of our zoning ordinances, particularly along Route 9. If you drive up and down Route 9, you know, there are parts of Southborough's Route 9 that are, quite frankly, shabby, and we need to fix that, because we have a long list of nice things that we want. We want sidewalks, we want a new school, we want a community center, we want trails, we want more police officers. I'm sure every other department has its needs. We need services, and we've got to, we've got to have a partner in terms of our CIP partners, and we need to treat them as partners to help us share that load, because otherwise... otherwise, the, the, the decision we really have to face is whether we want our community to look like Acton and Stowe. Acton's at just a, just about ninety percent. Stowe is at ninety-four percent. Or do we wanna look more like Westboro, which is at seventy percent? And they're complaining because they went from fifty to seventy. You know, we're, we'd kill to be back to, to, to be at, at, at seventy. So I, I think we need to have an honest discussion about how we treat, uh, those folks that wanna do commercial development in town. And we need to have a, an honest discussion about, you know, the taxing implications. Uh, I went to the forty B review, um, and was chatting with one of the developers and said, you know, we'd like you to build more things so we can tax you. And said, we want to pay the taxes. And so I think, um, we're at a crossroads here and we can either choose to have the residents bear the burden, and that burden is coming fast and furious, and it's gonna mean more six percent tax increases and the likes, or we can start making a serious effort to work with commercial and industrial partners to see if we can get somebody to share the load.
Marguerite? Thank you for the presentation. Um, the real estate market is very heady, as we all know, when we check the values of our houses. How did this happen? Um, I'd just be interested to know, uh, what, for instance, the list of towns that you had split or not split, how they are, how they are faring with this enormous, um, uprise in, uh, in residential house prices? Just to see what other towns are experiencing and how they're thinking about it.
So you're looking for average. I mean, we can get you any information. It's all available on the Department of Revenue's, uh, website. They have a great data center. So, you know, you can grab those and you can look at what people, you can compare, um, um, average, you know, average assessed, uh, and, and average bills. There's all sorts of those type of, uh, analytics on their, on their website. Um, you know, if you guys want any of that or, you know, just let us know and we'll run them, we'll, we'll pluck them off.
I would find it helpful because I feel like at this point, in my experience in town, we're in a new, kind of a new game in terms of what houses are worth.
Everybody is. I mean, it's just, really, I mean, I talked to a lot of, uh, my colleagues and it's just, it's staggering how much. Now, maybe you get one year where it goes crazy, but this is, this is, you know, three, four years. I mean, I did look, the good, good thing is I have looked at, you know, nine, nine months of assessments, um, in twenty-four. Now, again, I'm looking at that top thing, medium sale price. I'm not splitting it out, you know, and I'm, it looks like, um, you know, we're starting out at like ninety-two, ninety-three, it, you know, so that would indicate maybe not a big adjustment. But again, I'm not breaking them all down. I don't know if there'll be a shift and, and that'll, that'll spike the average, um, assessed, uh, single-family home. I don't know that. But just, it, it does seem like it's, 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 it's going up, but it's slowing significantly.
Is it, because what I'm noticing is a jump of like five hundred thousand dollars in two years on house value.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, we, we're going back to twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-one sales. It's a crazy market. You know, twenty-four seems to be uncertain, you know, a lot of uncertainty. But again, you all know, you know, presidential election plays into that. Um, interest rates, you know, didn't come down as much as people thought. And I think one of the biggest things is you gotta keep in mind, people are locked into rates, low rates, um, so, you know, not a lot of movement. I just think people are, you know, maybe on the other side of the election, things will, we'll see what happens. But yeah, a lot of uncertainty. And, you know, we're hung with a lot of, a lot of our commercial is, is big buildings is all, you know, is all, um, office and, as you've all alluded to. I mean, it's, you know, that, that market's beat.
Does Southborough have more office per building, number of buildings than, say, Westboro?
I, I'd have to go and really delve in.
Are we office heavy? Is that what's happening?
They have a.
Because we don't have sewer, then we don't really have the capacity to do much more than.
Can't go up, basically.
That's huge. Like, you're not gonna, it's, it's very difficult to build hotels. Anything with a high water and sewer usage, you know.
Or life sciences, for example, which, uh, Westboro is looking at. And that's gonna put demand on their wastewater systems and they gotta do something about that. But we basically aren't in that game since we just don't have the wastewater capacity.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and Al alludes to, you know, maybe you run a trunk line to sewer somehow down Route Nine, it'll open things up and, and, uh, you know, so we can diversify a little bit. Pretty much, you know, the office buildings, everybody loved them because, you know, five o'clock, everybody's gone, nobody around on the weekends. Um, but then this happens. You know, we almost have a lot of our eggs in one basket. Whereas if we were more diversified in the industrial markets, we're, you know, it's very strong. Flex space, things of that nature, very, very strong.
Thank you. Andrew?
I don't have too much to say, but I didn't say last year and the year before that. I mean, I think that the slide in the presentation, which is, you know, the same type of presentations before, that's the most compelling, is even if you wanted to consider it and you did a really small shift, you wouldn't save that much money on the residential side. And, um, you know, the outlier of the surrounding communities, which always interests me, is Sudbury, right, which has a split rate. Um, uh, but, you know, I think that maybe they don't have the same kind of competition for, you know, places you could relocate that we are, right? Where we're right on a line of, you know, Natick, Framingham, Southborough, Westboro. So I just always fear that if we, for the first time in decades, start to split the tax rate to try to save a couple hundred bucks off of each average residential bill, that, um, it would be counterproductive to what we're trying to do long-term in terms of who we wanna attract on Route Nine. So, um, I'm gonna vote for the split tax rate like I have the last several years. Um, and, um, you know, the, um, not remembering the term, the, uh, thing you can use, the, basically create like a, it's really the, the scheme you use in like Nantucket or Cape Cod, the, um, you know, the exemptions, doesn't make sense for Southborough because we're not in that unique situation. Um, so I, I agree with the recommendations of the Board Assessors.
Okay, so final quick comment. Um, so Al, kind of to your point, if you look at page two, um, of what was in our packet, it's not industrial that didn't go up, it's commercial, it's office buildings, right? So the industrials actually did pretty good. So that's a type of property still doing okay. Um, it's the commercial, the office buildings that are, are so vacant that when their income statement comes in.
Well, I mean, a, a Home Depot, a Whole Foods, those are all commercial. And, you know, some of those have, uh, waste profiles that would be perfectly reasonable for onsite.
Different, but I'm just, I'm the standard office building, like on Route Nine, um, that I'm in, that's, that's who's suffering. Um, office buildings are.
There's no question about it. And, you know, uh, one other point I did wanna make is that, you know, our, our average tax bills are actually, you know, among the highest in the Commonwealth. We are currently at just under the, just over the ninth percentile.
We usually around thirty, thirty, thirty-two is where we usually fall, sometimes.
Thirty-two out of three fifty-one.
Yeah, highest.
Yeah, so that's.
And as high as twenty-three and, you know.
Yeah, so it's, it's, we're in the top ten percent, you know, and it's not the type of, and if we continue on the path we're on, we're, we're going to improve our ranking or, or if you want, you use those, those terms. So, yeah, we really are at a crossroads, you know, in terms of, of, of who's gonna pay for the nice things that we want.
And keep in mind, the one thing that nobody talks about, we only have thirty-eight hundred taxable parcels. We do not, you put a big piece of, you know, a big capital project, that's all that's, it's spread, you know, you go to Northborough or you go to Westborough, you're two and a half times that for parcels that you're spreading that cost over. Okay, and, and, you know, so it's, you really gotta think about that. That is not many parcels for the type of, um, you know, expenditures we, we like.
And knowing that, our expenditures are fixed. They're not variable, they're fixed. So we've got a fixed set of costs to spread over a very small tax base. One other thing and then we'll, we'll vote. Um, the slide that Paul had up that had the four, um, different tranches of house values with the lowest-priced houses on top, the highest prices on the bottom. So it looks like higher-priced houses are, their values are increasing faster than lower prices. I, okay. And the, you're right, that used to not be the case.
We always have these shifts and that's, you know, it happens in all the classes. Condos, sometimes you see three, you know, complexes going up significantly and for some reason, sales in one complex are, you know, a level or the, you know, lost a little bit. You know, that doesn't, doesn't make sense, but that's what the data's telling you and that's how you have to assess. So, yeah, exactly.
Okay, Andrew, you wanna do all three motions?
Don't forget, you have to go to public, open it up for public comment before you guys take a vote.
Do we have any public comment here first? Online, Vanessa? No? Okay, we have no public comment, Paul?
Do we have to vote to close the public hearing before we vote or?
I would think so.
Yes, okay.
What are you pointing to? All right, so let's acknowledge a letter from the, um, Chamber of Commerce, quarter four ninety-five, who continued to support a single tax rate. This is a letter we get pretty much every year, so they have not changed their mind. Okay, so Andrew, you wanna do the vote to close the hearing first?
I move that we close the public hearing for the tax classification hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, then you wanna make three separate motions? So.
Yeah, let's see if I can get them right here.
Here's your exemptions right there.
All right, thanks. First, um, I vote that the board, uh, adopt a single tax rate for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
And I vote that the board.
Did we see Sam's hand go up?
It did go up. That's why I leaned out, I leaned out, Paul.
The spotlight on that?
As I did.
It was a little slow.
As I did for the last couple of years, I can count votes, so.
And I vote, uh, that the board not adopt the residential exemption.
Second.
All in favor?
And I move that the board not adopt, adopt the small commercial exemption.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we agree with you. Okay. So Tammy, nice to see you out of the DPW. Okay, it's nice to see he, Mr. Witt is back in a uniform.
Thank you, Kathy.
Jeffrey, thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
And Laurie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So Paul, you haven't walked, worked here quite as long as your cousin. Thirty-six years.
Seniority, huh?
Okay, let's do Rec Commission next because it looks like, it looks like everybody's here. Yeah. So, do anyone come up too? Don, you're welcome to come up too. Okay, we love having you here. Okay, so Travis, we'll turn it over to you. So introduce yourself and let us know who's here with you and then.
Thank you.
You gotta keep the mics close.
Yep, sorry.
That's okay.
First one. Um, Travis Farley, the Recreation Director for the town of Southborough, and I'm accompanied by Jen Hansen, our Recreation Commission Chair, and Don Dumont in the audience. I think we have Kristin Laval in the audience as well on Zoom. Could be wrong. Uh, but thank you for carving out some time for us. We appreciate it. And just going over all things recreation for the last few months, um, I did submit the report or a, a very brief report for the last three months. And if it's okay with the board, I'll just run through some highlights of the, of the report. Um, I'll just go back to the, to the summer. Um, we had a, a very successful summer, um, and we had, uh, a lot of the staples that you normally see, our, our regular summer camp. We had, um, our Sky, Sky Rise Summer Camp, um, Summer Theater Camp. We had our pre-K soccer. We actually also added a few new wrinkles to our summer, um, summer program offering, which was great. Um, we had some hands-on science, some comic journalism, some beach tennis, battle robots. So we had a, a, a pretty, we tried to be well-rounded with our summer offering. It's, it tends to be one of the busiest years times in the rec world. Um, happy to say that our participation numbers were a little bit higher than they were last summer, which was great. Um, and on the concert series, we actually added a few new concert bands this year. We added three. The weather cooperated. I think we only missed a handful. Same was at a lot of them and we appreciate that. Uh, we had some kids concerts, some new food trucks, and it was usually pretty well-attended. Um, so it was a, it was a great, we're looking forward to building on the momentum from that for next summer. Um, and then obviously, Summer Nights was the, the cap of the summer. Uh, very well-attended, the weather really cooperated. We had a great crowd, a lot of great feedback. We had, uh, the inflatables, food trucks, obviously the fireworks were the, the, the highlight of the night. We had a, a gonk-what robot, robot clubs, robo club was there and they were doing some demonstrations on the tennis courts. Um, but a big thank you to the DPW Police Department, Fire Department, Board of Health. Um, logistically, the event wouldn't have happened without them, so a huge, huge shout-out to them, a, a thank you. And then financially, obviously, we have some key players with that. We have Friends of Southborough Recreation, St. Mark's, Middlesex Savings Bank, Ken's Food, Main Street Banks, and Abu Realtors were, um, some of the key sponsors for that event. So that event wouldn't have happened without their support. Um, and then delving into fall registration, um, we actually, on the first day of registration, we took in over a hundred and twenty-five registrations, which was great. Um, that's up from fifty-seven from last year. So we had a very busy day one of fall registration, which was fantastic, um, compared to fall of twenty-three last year. We, we, we've actually added a few, um, we've tried to have some really good dialogue with the school department. They're doing some wellness half-day programs or half-day school days. We've really had some good dialogues with the school department to figure out how we can fit in and what we can do to help offer and offset some of the childcare needs that parents might have and offer some new half-day programs for us. So we're, we're exploring that. Um, and we have some, you know, team interview prep programs. Um, we did, we're actually doing a coloring contest right now for elementary school kids. We've had some pretty good submissions, so keep them coming. Uh, and then just looking, uh, looking at the numbers for the last two months, um, so September to, September one to October thirty-first of this year, uh, we actually have six hundred and sixty-three participants in programs. Um, compared to last year, at that time, we're about four eighty-five. So we've had some pretty good fall success. Um, she's probably gonna hate me for saying this, but I think a lot of it is probably to Christina's credit. We had a, a two-month window where Christina was a one-man army for, basically, May and June were probably the busiest time in the rec world for planning. And with the support of the commission, obviously, um, she really, um, uh, she really put a, the best foot forward and did an amazing job. We could have taken a step back with, obviously, Tim leaving and the momentum that he created, but to Ti, uh, to Christina's credit, she really, uh, did an amazing job trying to put her staple on the summer programs and she did that. And she did a great job. And I think some of the momentum you see from the spring and summer, um, is carrying over to the fall. So she deserves a lot of the credit for some of the success we're seeing right now for fall programming, which is great to see. Um, and obviously Heritage Day, thank you for the kind words. Um, weather was okay, uh, but I think for the first half of the day, it was just cloudy, a little, little sprinkle, but, uh, it was really good for me. It was my first one, so it was really good to see despite the weather. We had, uh, boards, committees, um, thank you for those that attended, uh, Fire Department, Police Department, DPW Department. It really was a, a good way to see everybody from Southborough come out. Uh, we got to see Girl Scouts, youth sports, um, the parade. We had about, um, fifteen or twenty groups, I think, and we had about two hundred walking participants, which was great. Um, I think I was getting pelted with candy. I was trying to take pictures on the side and I was getting candy thrown at me. Uh, but it was, it was good to see. And then we had about sixty-five vendors, um, on the front, the field at St. Mark's. So despite that, and it was a very well-rounded group of vendors, uh, from food, bacon, I'd never know there was a bacon guy, but I got bacon, which was good. Uh, and we got to, I got to see the Tricentennial Committee. It was, uh, it was a lot, it was a lot of fun to see, kind of the snapshot of Southborough, um, everything, everything that had to be off, to offer. Um, and some of the, the staple programs we have for the fall too, um, we usually run a cross-country team in the fall. We've been doing it for a number of years. This year, we actually tweaked it a little bit and we created a Southborough Running Club. Um, we have a local resident at Manic Gleason, hats off to her, um, had a curriculum, uh, in mind and we, we made it a little more well-rounded, um, as opposed to a cross-country team. It's a little more for everybody. Uh, we still do the meets, but it's, it's something for everybody as far as, um, running goes. So if you're a novice runner and you wanna learn more about running, great, join the program. If you're somebody that really looks forward to the meets, and we've done two of them so far, it, that's really great to see. And we're actually very happy this year, we actually got to collaborate with the Friends of Southborough Recreation and we included the gobble-wobble, um, participation or ribbon in that, um, in that, in that fee. So residents got that, um, included as well, which is great. Um, we're up to close to forty for that program as well. And then our ski and snowboard program, um, we actually did one bus last year and just because of the demand, um, we actually took one bus and a van last year. We actually upped that to two coach buses. So we're taking close to eighty-one trawdy or middle school kids to watch Houston starting in January. Should be interesting. Uh, I'm looking forward to it. Uh, and then some upcoming programs that we have, um, our, our staple fall, um, trunk retreat's coming up. It's actually this weekend. We're doing it at Woodward Elementary School, starting at three o'clock. We're partnering with the Fire Department, uh, right after their costume parade. Uh, right in the front lot, we're doing, I think we have about fifteen trunks. Um, Friends of Southborough Recreation, Tricentennial will hopefully be there, us. Um, I think we're dressing up as pirates, so it should be fun. Uh, but the weather looks great. I think after the trunk, the trunk or treat's gonna go from three to five, um, we're gonna take a little bit of a break and then we're gonna play a movie. I think we put it out to the public in Castor once, so we're gonna play a movie, um, in the, in the front of Woodward on the, on the grass lot. So that should be a lot of fun. So that should be a lot of fun and hopefully to wrap up around 8 o'clock. So that's a free community event that we're doing. We're still taking candy donations because we usually run out of candy, no matter how much we get. So we're very much looking forward to kind of one of the last bigger fall events that we have coming up this weekend. And then last but not least, very excited to say, we've already, it's just how crazy it is in the rec world, but we're already looking forward to spring, summer of next year. And traditionally, I think last year, we had our summer registration start in mid-March. We're going to try to ramp that up and we're going to try to do it in mid-February this year. Just listening to the parents and then trying to solidify daycare, the earlier that families can lock that in. We're going to try to get our spring, summer registration out to the public in hopefully January. And then registration will open up for our summer programs in mid-February. And that is all things recreation. Sorry if I rambled.
Is that all?
You didn't ramble at all, did you mention gobble-wobble coming up?
Yes.
Yes, gobble-wobble, so that is, that registration is open. If you go to the town of, the recreation page, Friends of Southborough Recreation has like a subgroup and it has a link to the registration there. But I'm sure you'll see signage around town, we're going to start posting that everywhere once Halloween ends.
Good.
But then you can do, we're going to do bid pickup like we normally do the day before Thanksgiving at Trotty or Middle School. And then that'll be obviously Thanksgiving morning, I think at 8 a.m. So it should be a good day.
That's our, that's the Friends biggest fundraiser, so we want to make sure we.
Yes, it is, so we will make sure we highlight that, you should see that everywhere. Once we get through the trunk or treat this weekend, we're going to turn our focus to gobble-wobble and supporting that and getting the word out about that.
Well, this was great to hear. We appreciate you, it looks like you've really hit the ground running. And I thought you had a lot to do, but you just always have a lot to do, this, this never stops. You know, it really is, you're around, as far as there's always something coming.
Yeah, every time, every time you think, okay, the winter is going to be the downtime. And then you start thinking about, oh no, that's probably going to be when we start planning for spring and summer. And then like, we're, we're going to be adding a few more events maybe in the spring, so that's going to ramp up. So yeah, it's, there's never a dull moment, we always like to say.
But it really still sounds like such a, it's such a healthy group of offerings for every age in this town as far as if you want to do something, you've got plenty to do. And of course, for people where both parents work, those after-school programs are always a godsend as far as, you know, having your kid do something healthy. So I think this is all great and I'm glad you're here. And it really does seem like you have truly gotten where you want to. You look so calm on Heritage Day, I saw you walking around and I thought, you know.
I had you fooled.
Well, you know, never let us see your sweat, right? But you look totally cool and with, it was just amazing how many boots are there now as far as all the stuff that you could do. It's hard to get to all of them, especially on a rainy day.
Yes, I think Girl Scouts did a walking taco and I'd never seen it. They had like a, it was a bag of Tostitos and they put taco stuff in it. So basically, you eat a taco out of a bag, like a chip bag.
They call it a walk-around taco or something.
I've never seen it, I'd never done, I ate one, it was delicious. But it was, it was a good day, fun to see.
Jenny, you want to say anything about the, what you, what you guys are doing on the commission?
Oh, okay, do you want to plug Rec Connect? Because people might not fully understand that.
Yes, very good point, thank you. So Rec Connect is a, is a collaborative adaptive rec program that we launched with Shrewsbury, Northborough and Westborough as well. There's a, there's a fourth town in there, I apologize. So we have a few programs coming up. I don't know them off the top of my head, but we have an array of adaptive rec programs that I want to make sure was included. And thank you for noting. But if you go to the Southborough Recreation MyRec page and that's interested you, please, there's, there's three or four offerings that we have. I think we're going to a Holy Cross basketball game this winter and we're trying to, we're trying to do some events and stuff like that. So if you're interested in any adaptive rec program, please check out Southborough Rec. We're doing a really good collaborative program. You don't see a lot in the rec world where towns get to come together and do stuff like this and it really is unique. So it's something, if that's interested you, please check out our webpage.
That's great, thank you for reminding me. So Jenny, you want to say anything?
I don't know. I think from like the commission's standpoint, we've been partnering, talking through like what our options are around the dog park and how to move that forward, knowing that funding for that will disappear in about a year or so. Looking into what our options are. We've been partnering a lot with, or discussing a lot with the Niri Building Committee. Just understanding what they're doing, how that will impact our fields and use like that, making sure that they know what's important to us and what we want to keep open.
During construction?
Yeah, potentially through construction or like as they're looking at different footprints, giving input on that, which has been, which has been good. And then also having conversations around the choke field. And like the question of when do we pull forward the turf there that we've been wanting to do for years and always been talking about. But when is the right time to, to kind of pull the trigger on that and further dive into turf there?
And that's three, four, five million dollars, something like that?
Yeah, was it?
One and a half to two.
Well, that's a lot less, okay, one and a half to two.
Yep, so we've, we've dusted off the original plans for that and we're taking another kind of like look at it to see what does the pricing look like today and what are our options? Knowing that like having turf under the lights would be really beneficial. And that would help offset any changes to the, the Niri grass fields or things like that, so.
Okay, that's great. Don, you want to say anything?
Travis did a great job.
He does, yeah.
Tim did a great job before.
So you should come up and get our microphone.
So when Tim left, the concern would be the momentum that we've had over the last five years, what would happen? And we ran a pretty extensive search. And it's a difficult market to find talented people and we were fortunate to find Travis. And so far, so good, he's really delivered on what we've been looking for. We'd like to get the, the situation at Lumblad squared away so we can give him a project to sink his teeth in. But as far as the programs are concerned, as far as the participation, the creativity, his engagement with the departments across the town, all A-plus, fantastic work so far.
I thought Lumblad was all set. Oh, I'm thinking, never mind, I'm taking calendar, never mind calendar. So, okay, Lumblad, never mind, so yes, I agree. I'm on the Niri Build Committee, so I know about the discussions here, so I'm, I'm up to date on that one. Okay, anybody have any questions or comments or compliments for these guys?
I do.
Okay, go ahead Sam.
Two things, one, I'm curious, do you track your participation rates in terms of capacity and programs? For example, do you, for example, if you look across all your programs, are you 100% subscribed typically? Or you run 80% or whatever, what kind of numbers do you see there?
Yeah, we have a, we use a rec management system called MyRec. And that tracks, it's very, very thorough with reporting. So we can track like min's, maxes for programs and then, okay, our enrollment's at eight, our min's six, our max 12. Where do we slide in with that? Generally, everybody does it a little bit differently by department. I've always liked participation numbers because that's just my way of tracking it. You definitely can take a deep dive into like min's, maxes, where you are like percentage-wise with filling out programs, a little more in-depth.
But are you typically close to capacity on programs?
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, I think for the most part, it's, it's a, it's kind of a broad, some programs do better than others. They, they all kind of equal out, but I think we are definitely on the higher side.
Yep, interesting. Follow Kathy's point, I think that rec, in my view, is a critical community resource in the sense that you guys, I think, bring people together as much or more than any other program in town, which I think is a critically important thing for a sense of community, which is one of the things that came up again and again in the master plan process. And the more you can do to connect people who otherwise wouldn't connect, I think is critically important for the town long-term. And I've had a couple of conversations with your predecessor Travis about strategic planning and getting people thinking about longer-term issues. And I still don't have a good mental picture of where the critical bottlenecks are in terms of capacity. Is it field space, is it gym space, is it staff to run programs? But some sort of a longer-term view that says, here's what we, what we think we could do or should do longer-term if we had, you know, not maybe unlimited resources, but fairly expansive resources. And what does this town, what does the town get for these additional kind of programs? What would we want to do more of, for example? What kind of resources are required? And not, not to, you know, six decimal place accuracy, but just sort of a conceptual picture to say, here's the goal that we ought to set for ourselves long-term. And as you've heard already, money's tight, it's always going to be tight. But if you don't get your O in there, it's probably not going to happen, so. And as I look at people who've had success at getting funding for new, new positions, new programs historically, the model that seems to work best is somebody comes out with a five-year, 10-year plan and says, here's what we'd like to do. You socialize the concept and by the time it gets to the budget process, people are more familiar with it and understand it better and more likely to support it. So seems to me that would be a very useful thing. And I think you've had some of those conversations, but I've not seen documents that, that lay that out. And I think that would be a useful communication mechanism to start reinforcing with people generally.
Yeah, so I know we have, we have a, we have a capital plan that looks out 10 years that we review every year with the, the Capitol Committee. So I think that looks at mostly like our facilities.
Facilities, right.
Our equipment and stuff like that. You know, we did a huge study 2016, I think it was, around like all the fields and capacity planning and all of that. And that study is actually what has like driven the commission and all the work we've been doing the last several years. And I know we put on our capital plan, I think in a year or two, we wanted to, it was time to renew that study. Because we've kind of like, we'll have seen it through and kind of like groaned through it. And now we're ready to start doing that study again, to start predicting where are we headed. But I think the one good thing about rec is that as we, as we want to do more things in more capacity, we flex with part-time staff, right? So they are hired for a program and the program funds them.
Right, right.
So I don't necessarily see us needing, like coming in the, in the next couple of years being like, we need another full-time person on staff.
Right.
It's more about how do we, how do we leverage the staff we have to then hire all this part-time to keep the program going.
But again.
And then the other thing too is the importance of what's going to happen with Niri, the impact on the fields. But then also, we have limited inside space.
Yep.
So whatever happens with Ben or Woodward or Niri, we at least maintain what we have because we probably could do with more. But we don't, losing what we have would be detrimental to the program.
I agree that facilities are a key issue in terms of cost certainly. But to me, there are other dimensions, for example, just to pick a silly one. I mean, let's say you determine that chess clubs or the wave of the future or whatever, you don't need a lot of facilities for that necessarily. But programmatically, what do you see coming in terms of recreational opportunities for the town? And, and again, you might think of stratifying by age group as well. We've got a senior population that is growing rapidly here. And I think, and Senior Center has a number of recreational programs for seniors. But it seems to me there's some interesting opportunities in that direction. So if somebody who's taken a comprehensive look at all of that, and I think you guys are in an ideal position to do that, to come back with some suggestions to start shaping people's thinking about that in terms of activities and resources, would be a very helpful thing for longer-term, so.
Yeah, that's great.
That's it for me, thanks.
I don't have much to say, it's, it sounds wonderful and I agree, a longer term. We don't, can't know what everything's going to be like until the school thing is decided, so. But I, I was especially struck by the Westborough, Northborough, Southborough, Shrewsbury.
Rec Connect.
Yes.
Yeah, you don't see it a lot in the rec world where towns can come together like that. It really, to Tim's credit, Laurel, Ally from Northborough, they all kind of came together and they're, they kind of pooled their resources. I think about a month ago, we had a Rec Connect sneaker prom, which was adaptive program, which was fantastic. Me and Christina were there and it was just lovely to see and they all had a blast and it was a great event. Fills your heart, but I'd love to do more of that.
Yeah, that really was, I saw the photos, they were really good.
Andrew?
I don't have anything really further to say other than keep up, keep up the good work.
How did you say what you wanted to say?
Yeah, no, I just, I'm really pleased that you've hit the ground running and there's, appeared to have been no hiccups in the transition and keep it up.
So I'll conclude with a quick anecdote. So I, I've got a deceased sister who's got six girl grandchildren.
Start again, I've got a deceased sister in Kentucky with six young girl, female grandchildren. Where I'm from, there's not many camps. And so I brought five or six up this summer and three went to the, the town camp at Woodward. And they had a ball, I mean, a ball. Now, this is two six-year-olds and a seven-year-old, so you know, they're not going to hold back if they don't like something. So they came home and they just could not say, they had fun every single day. To the point, I love dropping them off and picking them up, it's kind of the favorite part of my day. I hadn't done this in so long, right? And then after they went home, I was, I missed them so much, I'd drive by and see kids playing and I thought, boy. So we were always talking about next summer. So I just saw, you know, Christina was there every day, opened the door to, to get them out. So I was really proud of that camp, so good job guys. And it's so cost-effective too compared to, to, to other camps, so.
We can arrange a rent-a-child program for you.
We always have counselor positions available.
Yep, yep, so anyway, anything else, anybody?
Nope.
But truly, thank you guys for being on the commission. I hope you stay a long time and I'm looking at Jen. And thank you Travis for doing everything you do, it really does sound like you guys are firing on all cylinders.
Thanks.
Okay, so thank you, thank you for coming.
So I got to go back to B and C. Kat is here. So Leah, what are, what do you want to talk about tonight?
Well, I'm here to simply witness the discussion around the tax class.
Hi, everyone. Leah Emerson, Southborough EDC Coordinator.
What is it you're, I'm trying to make it right.
Well, the tax classification discussion, I did want to be here for that. You hit all of the points and I commend you for voting as you did. As you know, commercial sales are down 91% over the Metro West area. And I just don't think this is the time to implement a 5% increase. So, thank you. And other than that, I'm interested in the 40R, is that off the agenda?
Yes, we're going to do that. Mr. Davis wasn't quite ready with his slides, we need to get him in the packet, so he's going to do it at the November 4 meeting.
Okay, so I'll stay tuned for that. So that was really it for me tonight, but thank you.
Okay. All right, so Kat is here for, for our part. So let's go, let me just make sure it's clear. So under scheduled appointments, B and C, we have postponed the discussion that Dave Ferris has sent us a letter about as far as Pleasant O'Neill fees to November 4 because of a posting error. And then Mark Davis didn't quite have his presentation ready in time to get it into the packet. So he's going to come and talk to us about what he thinks we should consider for development around the train station on the 4th. Okay, so Kat, you want to come on up? I am so glad to see you. So tonight is Carlos' birthday, so I promised her I wouldn't mess up tonight. So, but she did not need to be here. Okay, so let's just jump right in. Can you go back to your three line items and tell us where you stand, what's changed since we met two weeks ago?
Yes, Catherine McKee, Southborough Charles Committee, 18 Walnut Drive. So today, I'm here to report back the status that we've, the progress we've made on the crosswalk and the money that we're asking to reserve and that which we're asking to reallocate.
Okay, so we're talking about the $15,000 for the crosswalk across from Sanofi to get from one side of Route 30 or Pleasant Street to the other?
Yes.
Okay.
So once we, we had the traffic engineer review the site for the site distance to determine where the crosswalk needed to be to be safe. And it needs to be further back than we had originally planned, which means that it's going to cross Route 30 at a section, at the section where it then needs to cross two of the exits from Stony Brook. So if you're familiar with the road, Stony Brook branches off in a right and a left. So essentially, the crosswalk will come across Route 30 and then you have to cross one Stony Brook exit and then another. So that means two more crosswalk-type structures. And while those won't be, I don't think they will require flashing beacons, they will require ADA curbing. So it's now three crosswalks and then an ADA path to the trail. So what we're suggesting is not taking that on this year. And then we'll just reallocate all the money back. We appreciate the time to explore this opportunity. It still is a very good project. We still have an interest from Sanofi and we'll pursue it in 2025 with different funding.
So you know what you should do is then make sure you get this on the capital plan when you're ready to, so that it goes through that normal process, okay?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so that one's coming back, okay? Now, you want to talk about the, I think the easy one, which is the trail enhancements?
Yes, so Carla said, can you guarantee that you can spend it by 11:04 and I can? I just need to get the supply list and get that ordered. So I can work with Travis to get it ordered through the cap, through the, you know, the process that we can do that. Or I will do that on my own and submit the expenses.
So you know what those enhancements are that you want to do? You know what they are, you just got to get it done?
Yes.
Okay, so, and you know you want to spend, we want you to spend every penny of that $12,500, okay? So 501, 502, whatever.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so you're okay with that one?
Yeah.
Okay, now let's talk about the one that was confusing last time. So let's kind of start over, which is the trail itself. And I think we're only talking about the ADA parking spaces?
For paving, correct. Yeah, the only money that we were, would like. Yeah, the only money that we were, would like to reserve is the twenty-one thousand that we had originally requested for the paving.
Okay, now, you had one forty-four, five forty-seven allocated.
Yes.
You, according to Carla, um, this is a up-to-date number, you have committed eighty, is that number, eighty-three thousand, five thirty-seven, which leaves sixty-one oh nine. Are you saying out of sixty-one, you are going to spend the twenty-one and we need to bring forty back?
Correct, so in total, you would have fifty-five thousand, nine dollars and fifty cents to.
Okay, do it, do it again, fifteen, and then what's the other number?
The other number is forty thousand, sorry, I can't see it. Forty thousand, nine, fifty. So it's forty thousand dollars and nine dollars and fifty cents.
Okay.
Total would be fifty-five oh nine, fifty.
All right, we got it. And so you've got the twenty-one thousand under control?
Yep.
Okay, all right, that's easy, so, much easier than last time. Okay, so this is where we are. Um, so we've got, coming back from CAT, fifty-five thousand dollars roughly. We've also got twenty thousand dollars coming back from the McCullough room upgrades because that's going to be, that's Zoom, that's a new up-to-date Zoom system where you just come in and push a button and go. That's going to be paid for by a different source of funds. Then we've got already thirty, roughly thirty-five hundred dollars that we already had. So tonight, we need to allocate the fifty-five, the twenty, the seventy-five, and call it thirty-five. So seventy-eight five thou, seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars to other projects and sources. So I will make an opening bid on this and you guys can modify it as you see fit. You're welcome to say for this, but you've done your job, okay?
Okay.
All right, so you're welcome to hear this, but I'm.
Yeah, no, I'm good to go, but I want, I did want to thank the board for the entire experience, for allowing us to have funding for our project, for taking the time, for being patient and for working with us through the process.
But we appreciate what you do too.
Appreciate it.
You are, yeah.
You've had more patience with this trail project.
Really?
Been a, an exercise in municipal bureaucracy, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not just municipal, state too.
State and Sanofi.
Okay, so we've had requests from the three major department heads to allocate more ARPA money for various relatively small things that are on the fiscal year approved capital plan, twenty-six, right? So we pay for them next year anyway, so this is just accelerating them back a little bit.
Yep.
That's Chief Putini, Chief Newell, and Bill Kandoff. So my proposal is to take that seventy-eight thousand dollars and split it equally among the three, and they've got more than, than that, so they've got more than would eat it up. So they've got plenty to get them up to a third of seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Where are my defibrillators?
So what we probably should do, Sam, because you're right, it's not on here, is take that out of Chief Putini's, or either Bill's, one or the other, so it's got to come out of there first.
For DPW, that's where.
Yeah, well, I said Bill's too. Okay, so we can do the motion that the, off the top, we're going to allocate the cost of the defibrillators.
Fifty-four hundred.
Right, it's fifty-four hundred?
Yeah.
Is it firm now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Non-parent has a quote.
Okay, so let's vote on that first, okay? Carla likes votes, right?
Do you first need to vote to reallocate the money from the trail?
Yes, I do, okay? And that's what, I promised her I would not forget to do tonight so she could enjoy her birthday, okay? Okay, so the first thing we want to do is reallocate fifty-five thousand, nine dollars and fifty cents from the Southboro, or the Peninsula Trail and the crosswalk at Stony Brook to the relief, tax relief bucket.
So moved.
Okay, you moved? Who moved?
Al moved.
Okay, Al moved, second?
Yes.
Second, okay, all in favor? Okay, now that's in the bucket. Okay, now the second vote is we need to move to move the twenty thousand dollars for the McCullough room upgrades to the tax relief bucket.
So moved, oh, second.
Okay, all in favor? We're good.
Do you want to do the motions or you?
No, go for it.
I'll just.
You're, you're sitting next to Kathy.
Okay, um, now, um, the next motion will be to allocate fifty-four hundred dollars from the tax relief bucket to the purchase of.
Three, Sam?
Two defibrillators.
External defibrillators.
External defibrillators, okay? I'm trying.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, now, um, the motion is to allocate the remet, a hundred percent of the remaining funds after these votes we've already taken to Chief Putini, Chief Newell, and Bill Kandoff equally.
And then are they going to come back with a?
They've got, got their list, we've got their list, so I just let them choose what they want to, we'll tell, this is the amount.
Can we get that list at the next, by the meeting?
Yes, we can get it, we can get them to give it to us so we know what we did, okay? All right, so there's my motion.
And that's, that's basically the last exercise.
That's it, we're done.
Okay.
And we spent three million, fifty-one thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, so there's a second on that, okay, all in favor? Okay, that should be the last ARPA vote we have to take, okay? All right? Okay, done, done, done.
In theory.
All right, now, let's go back to consent agenda items B and C. Okay, I held both of those. Um, I held B because there, we need to add something to it. So this is the draft budget calendar. Andrew Pfaff has looked at this too. So the, if you turn to the actual calendar itself, second page, if you have it, anybody have it? Nobody has it? Okay, so I'll tell you what it says. So the thing we need to add is on December seventeenth, we're going to meet with the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, CIPC. They're going to be ready for us to show what they are recommending for fiscal year twenty-six. They're meeting with departments right now, they met last, last night, I believe. So they're meeting with departments right now and they will come forth with their recommendations on the seventeenth with a joint meeting with us and advisory, that's our normal meeting night, that night, so advisory and CIPC will come, come this way, okay? So other than that, um, I think this is okay to approve. So Brian wants us to approve this so they can start communicating with the various departments as far as what they expect budget-wise. Okay, now the question he asked on the front page, if you remember, he wants to know, he wants guidance on what the overall budget instruction should be. Should it be level service? Should it be something else? Should it be level service? And if you want to do something else, like add a person, add a program, whatever, you got to do that on a separate ancillary budget. We need you to, first of all, focus on a level service budget with no headcount changes. So I'm not telling, I'm asking, so that's what he's asking for, is the guidance to, to.
I think it's a reasonable starting point, certainly.
Okay.
I, I agree, it's a, that's where we have to start, to find out how deep the hole is and then.
Okay. Okay, so he will put that language in there when he sends out his package, and then he will add the December seventeenth date to the calendar.
I have a question, Mark, do you have a different view of that?
No, I, I, I think it's a, it's a much easier way for the board to understand, here's what we're doing now and here's what the cost is going to be to continue doing that. And then here's some of the additional items to consider. I was, if you, if the camera caught me, I was kind of snickering because Kathy, you know, or Al said, I want to see how deep the hole is. And I'm sitting here thinking, and how much deeper we want to make it? So, um, sorry, but, but, but that's, but yeah, I think, I think that's a good way to do it, Sam. I think it, it helps to break that stuff out so you can see where we're.
I was just reacting to your.
Yeah.
I mean, the one, the one department where I think we're anticipating that there's going to be a request for, for two departments.
Two.
Are Police and Fire.
Yes.
And then this kind of bleeds into the.
Item C.
Yeah, the last C is, you know, I spent some more time today, you know, looking into the Public Safety Staffing Study and, you know, I have some thoughts about, um, collecting some additional data points that might help us inform a decision about, you know, school resource officer versus full-time detective, things like that. So I was going to raise my hand to volunteer to be a liaison for the next budget cycle with, at least with Chief, um, Chief Newell and work with someone advisory so that, I mean, the, the product will be still, there's one budget which is just a level service budget, but then, you know, there'd be another worksheet which shows, um, a budget with, you know, an additional resource that's, we all came together, um, you know, advisory liaison, select board liaison, the chief, that we think that we could support. And then of course, you know, full advisory and select board would talk about it. You know, the last budget cycle, I think the chief came with like four different, we had four different spreadsheets and that became.
Yeah.
So this time, the goal would be to keep it to just basically two, level services and then.
So we're going to talk about that in more detail in a second as far as what you do with the study.
Sure.
Okay, but all good ideas. Um, so everybody's okay with Brian's proposal here and with the instruction that we want level service and then if you want more people, more programs, you got to do it on an ancillary budget, but you got to give us a level service budget to begin with.
I think, um.
No.
I think the one question we haven't really thought about is whether the board wants to offer any substantive bylaws or, or other articles, uh, at the meeting. And the, the one I can think of would be to, um, institutionalize the noisy room or.
Okay, well, that's kind of separate. Right now, we're just trying to get the budget package out, so we'll, we'll definitely get to that as far as what to do. Okay, so everybody happy with this schedule? Now, if you look on, again, you don't have it, but he's got meeting with the three big departments separate from the Saturday Budget Summit, so we may still squash that together as time goes on. So that's something we can, we can work on. Okay, so, um, Andrew, you want to make a motion to accept this, accept that we're adding these December seventeenth date?
As amended. I move that the board adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, I can't believe I'm saying that. Budget calendar as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so that one's done. Okay, the next one I thought was something we ought to not gloss over because we've had so much discussion about the new Aetna retiree health plan for the last year. This is our first year, we're about to end it, it is on a calendar year basis. So we need to vote tonight to basically approve signing a new contract with Aetna for two thousand twenty-five. But what was interesting in here, and this is going to happen right away, it looks like we may, they, this committee, this healthcare, health insurance committee.
Insurance Advisory Committee?
Yep, IAC, right? Brian, Janice, Ryan Donovan, I forget who else is on it, but anyway, they may come back with a second recommendation, it's just not going to happen right now. They are talking to Harvard Pilgrim. Remind me, who survived that merger, Tufts or Harvard Pilgrim? Do they call themselves Harvard Pilgrim or Tufts?
Point thirty-two Health. Point thirty-two Health.
Okay, but is Tufts and Harvard Pilgrim much together, right? Okay, so anyway, I think it's that entity they're talking to, he calls it Harvard, Harvard Pilgrim here. But they're talking to them and what they would be coming back with there is a traditional Medigap policy. The Aetna one is a Medicare Part C Advantage program. So they're talking to now this Tufts Harvard Pilgrim group about buying from them, having a program where you go back and do the traditional Medicare and then just have your Medigap policy to, to back it up. So they may come back with a second program, but it won't be January first, it's going to be February or March by the time they come back with a recommendation, is what Brian Ballantyne thinks, okay? So I just wanted to point that out for those that are listening that are still concerned that with the program we have, or they want a second choice.
I had met with a, a couple of retirees with Mark and Brian, and there was definitely a, a desire for a second option, you know? And the question I would have is, you know, you have to, with Medicare Advantage, you've kind of got to sign up by early December, so if we come back with, you know, offering something in February, what does that really mean?
I don't know, Al, it's a good question, you may not be able to do anything until the next enrollment.
Well, that was, I'm sorry, that was something that's mentioned, that Brian did mention in the memo, is that we wouldn't have something ready for the traditional signup period in November, we probably would, if we do have something that comes on as a second option, we'd likely have to do a completely separate enrollment, probably.
But his point is, it may be too late, people have already enrolled in Part C and so you usually can't just un-enroll to go to a different program in the middle of the year.
Yeah.
So.
So it's possible.
There, there are some rules about that, I just don't know.
Yeah.
What they are and we need to make sure we understand that.
That should be something they, that group answers, so they understand, you know, whether you really can move from one to the other in the middle of the year, so that'd be a question.
I, I would also though observe that, uh, we've heard from a couple of people who are not happy about the new program. I will say that I've heard from more people, sort of randomly, who actually like the new program, so if you do, you know, show hands, the new program is actually getting favorable reviews from my limited exposure to people, so it's.
Oh, I think that's true, they know that, they've got the numbers, so they, they understand that the vast majority of participants are happy with it.
But if we can offer another option, it's not a bad thing.
There's a couple of people that, that are not necessarily unhappy, but still want an option, right? So they just want an option. So, um, but there's something very disappointing in this memo. We were supposed to only have a ten dollar, um, a month increase in this, and it's much more than that, which would be three percent, it was three hundred dollars, and it's going to go to three thirty-nine, which is, you know, a lot more than that, and that's eleven percent, twelve percent. And that's because there was a kickout for that lock. The Medicare changed a lot of rules last year, federal government, that make Medicare more affordable to people, the out-of-pocket costs are being limited, insulin has been limited to thirty-five dollars a shot, I think. And there's some more things like that, so in other words, it's costing the insurance companies more to, to cover people because of, of those rules. And therefore, there was a kickout in the cap on the increase from last year, so.
Yeah, but other.
I know.
Their payers are even more.
I understand, but I thought we were locked in, which was exciting, but we're not, apparently. So Brian's double checking that to make sure that the changes in Medicare really did allow them to do that kickout.
It is disappointing, but it's not bad relative to the market out there, certainly.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so someone, so now the question is, we're supposed to vote tonight to basically approve signing the new contract with Aetna as of one one twenty-five.
So moved.
Is there a time factor here? Can we wait to?
Yes.
November first.
Okay.
That's why we're doing this tonight. I think he says that in his memo.
Yeah, he does.
Yeah.
He does. So note, Al, we don't have much time.
So I, I second Sam's motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of Aetna for one one twenty-five, okay? All right, so you let Brian know? All right, so that should make him happy. Okay, now, I think if I am keeping up with this, we're down to other matters, we've already done ARPA. So the next one is to approve, you say restitution, approve the fine penalty for removal of a public shade tree at thirty-seven Clifford Street.
Well, it's, it's not a fine, it's a proposal from the property owner about how they want to resolve it.
Yeah, so this came down quite, let's see, came down a year ago, September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Marnie Houlihan happened to be walking past, she lives there, and saw what was going on, Marnie Houlihan happened to be walking past, she lives there, and saw what was going on, stopped to talk to the tree service before it came down, told them that this was a public shade tree, and the driver, I guess, apparently said, "We have all the permits and the police details come in, so I guess we're going to do it," and they did it. I am not sure what all transpired in the last year, I do know that in the recent past, Bill Kandoff and Chris Leroy have met with the homeowners, and the homeowners wrote us that nice email, and offered to buy two trees for the town to plant wherever the town thinks is appropriate, to replace the one large tree that was cut down. Bill Kandoff sat down with Jay Talaman to discuss this, and Bill's well aware of what our tree policy says, our tree policy doesn't have a cap on the fine, like state law does, it does, it talks about replacing the caliper of the trees with the same number of inches in one or more trees, so that's what our tree policy that we adopted last May and amended last October says. But Bill sat down with, he was ready to get this off his plate, he sat down with Jay Talaman, went over, Jay concluded, you can't make them, you can't find them more than $500, if they want to do more, that's up to them, they've offered two trees, Chris Leroy decided, he wanted to replace two trees that are dying, that I guess were planted with the road project, so he knew what two were, and he wanted to replace it with like kinds, so he went to Shrubs and Trees and had two set aside, they're $276 each, so a little bit more than $500. Since then, I've talked to Mimi Latrell, the chair of the planning board, and she pointed out that the tree policy does require reused trees that are on our accepted list, right? And the two trees that Chris set aside are not on that list, so I've talked to Bill since then, he said he and Chris are fine, replacing it with two trees on the list, if the residents agree, I don't know how much it's going to cost, the residents may just say, "Look, here's your check, you know, go, go buy your, buy your own trees," right? So, to me, the residents have two choices at this point, they could write a check for $500, or go ahead and buy the two trees that would qualify as far as acceptable town trees.
So, I guess, to me, not a bad choice, I would rather see the trees planted, I guess, and question for Chris Leroy, are there trees on the list that he thinks work in the place that he's going to put these trees, because some trees may be, for example, next to a road, it's got salt, and so you need to have a tree that is fairly salt resistant, et cetera, so I'm assuming there are trees on the list that Chris believes will thrive where he wants to put them, but barring that, I would vote for having trees replaced and buy as big a tree as we can get for a resident willing to purchase.
Well, I think the issue is, do we instruct Bill and Chris to go back to this family and say, "We need to talk about the trees again specifically, we need to buy two other trees, and this is what the cost is," and then if they balk, because it's a lot more, just, you know, the alternative is to say, "We can also write a check for $500."
Hopefully encourage them to step up.
Yeah, but you can't, you know, we've read state law, I don't think you can...
Can't require.
State law says $500, that's it.
Understood.
That's the max, right? And we are subject to state law, the regulate, the rule we have here does override state law.
But they could do more if they chose to, and...
Yeah.
There should be, hopefully, some desire to...
Well, let's let, let's let Chris and Bill be there charming selves, and see if they can end up with two different trees that they'll still pay for, even if they cost more, okay? But I just want to get this done, right? It's been over a year tonight, so let's just authorize Bill and Chris to go back, right, and say, "Whoops, the two trees that we thought we were going to do are not, not acceptable, they're not on our policy, so we need to replace those with these two trees, and we've already looked at the cost, this is what it is, and would you be willing to buy those two?" And if not, then the alternative would be, okay, give us a check for $500.
Sounds like a good plan.
Okay? Everybody agree?
Yeah, I mean, first off, this is actually an excellent time to buy trees.
It is, I agree, it is.
This is actually an excellent time to plant trees.
It is indeed. Now, we're going to talk about the policy in a second, so hold the thought on the actual update we need to do with the policy, but let's get this piece of it done, so that's the plan. So, the motion is to instruct Bill and Chris to go back and ask them to buy two different trees that are on our accepted tree list, and if they don't agree, to basically ask them to write a check for $500.
So, move.
All in favor?
I'll second.
Andrew's seconding, all in favor?
I'll motion.
Okay.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, so, 4-0-1 with Marguerite abstaining. Okay, now, the tree policy probably needs to be amended to reflect the fact that state law says you could only do $500. This tree, if my understanding is correct, is 18 inches, the one that got taken down?
Forty.
Forty inches of caliper?
Forty inches wide.
Diameter, yep.
Okay, so, if the family who lived there had bought 40 inches of trees, I'm pretty sure it'd be more than $500, much more.
Thirty, $40,000 maybe.
Yeah, so, I, my suggestion is that we ask Sam to basically add language to the tree policy, we post the hearing, and on the next meeting, actually vote to make sure that it's clear that we still can't go over whatever state law says.
Yeah, and that's extremely limiting, disappointing, if we can't do more than $500, because again...
Well, what do you want to do, Sam?
Yeah, I can't think of a better idea, but I will work on it, so...
Okay.
Let's do it for next time.
Okay, but we got to get, we got to post it, so we've got to have seven days before the next meeting.
Yes, okay.
Okay, all right, so, you're in charge of that?
I will talk to the town council.
Okay, and see if you can get a way, okay, so, if there is a legitimate way to get around the $500, go for it. Marguerite?
And I am, I, first of all, the tree was more than a yard wide, and what's been proposed are two little cherry bushes that don't grow more than six or eight feet tall. I don't think it's comparable, I think that the Brook Tree Service, I think that what we need to do is, in the tree policy, to also say that any company that does it needs to have some kind of, that cuts down a shade tree, has to have some kind of repercussion.
Sam, when you talk to Jay, can you run that by me, whether we've got any recourse with the tree company itself?
I will ask, I don't think so, but I'll ask.
I don't think so either.
Because I will, just anecdotally, I had a tree around my house that was leaning over the house, and I called, I think it was Sunrise, and he looked at it, and he said, "Is this a town tree?" I said, "I don't know," he said, "If it's a town tree, I'm not touching it." So, clearly, these people were from Milis, were not in their area, but it seems to me most towns would have a rule that you can't cut down a town shade tree, you'd have to be aware of it.
But, state law, that there is a requirement for hearings for town of trees, so...
So, you would think tree companies would know this, and it wouldn't, someone suggested this, it wouldn't hurt to make sure that the details that go over there also understand the rules, so that they don't, hopefully, they could say something.
That particular tree company, if you look at their website, there's a statement on there, it says, "Before embarking on a removal, it's imperative to become aware of a local regulations," and in this case, like Natick they're talking about, like many other towns, "They have specific rules governing tree removal to preserve the natural beauty and ecosystem, checking with local authorities ensures compliance and avoids potential legal ramifications." So, they're clearly aware of the issue, it just didn't happen this time, so, frustrating, but I will ask what recourse we might have on that, but I'd be surprised if there was much.
Okay, so we at least got this tree solved, right, as far as instructions go, and then Sam balls in your court to get the policy right.
And we'll do the policy with the seven days' notice at our next meeting.
Yes, thank you, Andrew. We're never going to leave that one down, okay, so, moving on. All right, so the last one is to discuss, continue to discuss the implementation of the public safety staffing study that was done. So, I've talked to Andrew Faff, Chair of Advisory Committee, and he and I discussed possibly forming a, I don't want to call it a working group, because I don't want minutes, whatever, but basically, designating two people from select board, two people from advisory, to work together on trying to figure out what should be done with the study, how to phase it in, if we agree that something should be done. That way, you know, we don't do this, and then advisory comes in and disagrees with it all, and we have to just kind of start all over, but, so I think, we thought it would be beneficial to kind of work together on this one, because they're going to be very important to its fate at town meeting.
I think two people is tough, one person you can do without open meeting law.
Okay, so you recommend one of each?
Yeah, one of each.
Okay, I think it's going to be Andrew on the advisory committee side, so you want to do that?
Sure.
Okay, and you'll be the liaison for the police?
Yeah.
For both budgets.
Both police and fire?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and you don't do anything else, just do, of course, it's big, right? We can fine-tune that, but at least do police, which is where the...
Yeah, so, does that cover capital too, or that stuff is pretty, the capital aspects are that are pretty detailed there.
They are.
I'm just, my thought is really just on the operational side.
Yeah, yeah, we'll hear from capital on December 17th, so they've, I think both chiefs went in front of capital last night?
No.
Puntini?
Nope, just fire.
Just fire, okay, so anyway, they've already been vetted, so when we see that, we'll let capital do their, do that job, and then we will...
Sounds good.
I think the key point there is something we touched on at our last meeting, is that it'd be very useful to have sort of the longer-term plan for this, to say, I would expect that we're not going to come up with an FY '26 plan to, you know, add six people for each of the departments here, so if they need to do it in a phased way, what is their recommendation for how that would occur for both departments, and how does that affect the budget process? So, that, to me, would be a very important...
I agree.
Piece of the picture here.
You're going to say what we should do, and then how we should do it.
Think that they could come up with that, so...
Al, any objections to the plan?
No, I think, you know, it's got to fit in the whole budget, and I'm still reluctant to do anything until I know, we know that we've solved the turnover problem. I'm actually agreeing with Marguerite that I'm not sure that we have, and, but I don't know that we want to talk about it any further than that.
No, not tonight, but, you know, except that the hiring has picked up, they had a good group of candidates for these, the two positions open, more than they have had, and good qualified candidates too, so maybe we've hit the nadir and we're coming back up, I don't know, I hope so. I'll see how it gets worse. Okay, so we've got a plan, so we've agreed that Andrew is going to liaise on the, at least, police budget this year, and he's also going to work with Andrew Faff as far as coming back to both groups with a recommendation as far as how to implement the...
Sounds good.
Okay.
Now, do we talk about police and fire?
Well, let's just do police, yeah, I think, let's separate that way, let's do, okay, you two do police, now Andrew may do fire too. Okay, anyone want to take the fire side of the safety study?
I guess I would do it if nobody else wants to do it.
I would do it, I would do it.
Go ahead.
Okay, and that leaves you two to keep working on rec, right, so you're involved on that side of it too. Okay, so I'll do police side, and then work probably with Andrew on that one too, okay?
Sounds good.
All right, everybody okay with that? I do fire, Andrew does police, you okay? Marguerite?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so, what time is it, 8:30? I think we're done.
Public comment?
Yeah, any other public comment?
Yes.
Marnie.
Who, Marnie? Okay, so bring her over.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can.
Great, Marnie Houlihan, 26 Clifford Road, but I'm speaking as a planning board member, so I wanted to thank you for hosting Mark Davis, I know it's, he's moved to November 4th, that's a conflict, we have a meeting on November 4th, and I think it's really